We call this meeting to order, and I have the invocation by Tim Blevins from Life Church.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to pray. Let's pray. Father in heaven, I'm grateful for the commissioners who prayed before the business meetings. Today we recognize that this is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. I pray for the commissioners to make decisions with godly wisdom and align our county under biblical principles of righteousness, stewardship, leadership, and fairness for all. I pray for the commissioners to be led by your spirit as they make important decisions that affect the lives of us residents. God, I pray that you would bless New Hanover County, its leaders, employees, and all those who make this county great. And I declare by faith that the best is yet to come for our county. I pray this in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number four is the presentation of service awards and introduction of new employees.
Good morning. It's always a pleasure to be with the board, and I say it every month, though. This is a particularly special meeting because we get an opportunity to recognize some important milestones in service to our community. We are going to begin with a couple of retirees. We never like to see people go, but we always respect when they've earned the opportunity to retire and reflect on their service to our community. And so I'm going to recognize our first retiree this morning and ask Beverly Butler to come forward. Beverly, if you would stand next to me and give me the honor of reading. I tell you what, how about you staying closer to the board? Yeah, I'm glad you're not on the steps. So we're going to read about Beverly's 27 years of service to New Hanover County. Her career began in public health as a postpartum newborn home visiting nurse within the maternal health program, where she played a key role in launching the Grant Navigator Intensive Home Visiting Program, significantly enhancing services for those that are in the greatest need. Beverly's journey continued as she dedicated 17 years to serving as a school nurse, a role in which her exceptional performance led to her promotion to team leader. She concludes her career within the Communicable Diseases Program, also as a team leader. Ms. Butler is celebrated for her exceptional work ethic, consistently going above and beyond her responsibilities. Her calm demeanor, thoughtful approach, and deep understanding of communicable diseases have distinguished her as an exemplary team leader. Her professionalism underscored by her receipt of a stellar award has not only reassured clients and coworkers alike, but has also set a high standard of care and knowledge. Beverly's legacy of dedication, professionalism, and innovation will undoubtedly continue to inspire and influence her peers and the Communicable Diseases Program, which she leaves in a far stronger and better position. And isn't that what any of us want to do? Leave things better than we found it. So if you would, please congratulate Beverly Butler on 27 years of outstanding service to New Hanover County. Beverly, congratulations and thank you. Beverly, again, thank you and congratulations on your retirement. So next, we're going to recognize someone who's retiring with 30 years of service, Octavia Spicer. Octavia, if you would come forward. Good morning. Do you mind standing next to me? Is your husband with you? Morgan, do you mind coming up? Thank you. I'm not going to speak for you. Do you mind if your husband comes up? Thank you, thank you. Octavia, I'm going to read a bit about your 30 years of distinguished service to New Hanover County. Octavia Spicer is retired after 30 years of remarkable service with New Hanover County, concluding a distinguished career within the Economic Services Division at the Department of Social Services. Throughout her tenure, Ms. Spicer has excelled in various roles, including economic services, caseworker, social worker, and most recently, family support specialist. Ms. Spicer's steadfast commitment and exemplary dedication have consistently set a high standard of excellence and integrity. Recognized as a top performer in her unit, her name was frequently featured on the Economic Services Quality Superstar Board, a testament to her hard work and unwavering dedication to high-quality service. Her professional values of integrity, professionalism, and stewardship were notably acknowledged when she received the Stellar Award in 2020. This accolade was in recognition of her exceptional efforts along her colleagues to support a client who had been neglected, highlighting just one of the many instances where she ensured that those in need received the best possible services. Thirty years of outstanding, incredible service. You can't replace Octavia. We just hope that we can bring people that have her passion and spirit to the organization. Thank you, and congratulations on 30 years of outstanding service. Octavia, thank you and congratulations. And commissioners, we'll do the math together, but that's 57 years of service to New Hanover County that we applaud, congratulate, but I think more importantly, thank both Beverly and Octavia for what they've done for our community. They deserve another round of applause in my mind. Congratulations, folks. So commissioners, we're at our point to recognize a few milestones this morning, and we've got a couple of people with us. So that means that hopefully we've kind of got a stable organization where we haven't seen lots of people turn over over the course of time. Because when you come to work here, we put a lot into choosing the right person because you've got to be passionate and committed to public service. And so when they've been here for five years, that is a huge compliment to them and their commitment to this organization. But it's not just five, it's 10 and 15 years this morning that we're going to recognize. And so we'll start with five years, and when I call your name, if you would, come forward. I'd like to be the first to shake your hand and then invite you to visit with the board. And so this morning, with five years of service, Jennifer Grimm, New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Congratulations and thank you. Commissioners, we've got two folks with us this morning that we're going to recognize with 10 years of service. And when I call your name, if you would, please come forward. With 10 years of service in the Department of Social Services, Aaron Sowers. Aaron, congratulations. Also with 10 years of service in the Department of Social Services, Terry Stevens. Terry, congratulations and thank you for what you do. Commissioners, we're going to recognize our final person this morning with a service award. We're going to proceed to 15 years, also in the Department of Social Services, Rosanna Zay. Rosanna, congratulations, and thank you for what you do. Commissioners, five years, 10 years, 15 years, I believe they all, all four, deserve another round of applause. Thank you for what y'all do, and thank you for being part of the team. Well, we still have some new folks to recognize. These are the incredibly bright, talented, passionate people that have come and joined the team in the last month to six weeks. And so when I call your name, if you would, please stand up because we want to welcome you with a loud round of applause. You deserve that, and we're so thankful that you have come to work with New Hanover County. And so first this morning, we're going to recognize Summer Grossman, Social Services. Summer, thank you. Rory Halpin, Emergency Management. Rory, thank you. Elizabeth Harrell, Social Services. Thank you. Jordan Pickett, Senior Resource Center. Jordan, thank you. Adrienne Wheeler, Public Health. My papers fell. Sorry about that. Bear with me. Well? That's it? All right. Sorry, that was somewhat anticlimactic. I didn't mean for it to be that way. No, thank you very much, commissioners.
Next is the presentation of Kate Fear, Public Utility Authority Annual Report for 2023. Mr. Kenneth Walker, welcome.
It's always inspiring when I get to come and provide these presentations. I often get an opportunity to also see how the county recognizes its staff, and that's a fantastic thing from one local government to another to observe. And I'll tell you that we have the same working relationship in terms of feeling appreciated by your staff. So thank you for this opportunity to come bring to you our 2023 Year in Review. As you may recall, the CFPUA bylaws require that we have an annual meeting in November where the Executive Director presents this report. And then thereafter, I have the privilege of coming and speaking to our sponsoring governmental agencies, the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County. I am very pleased to tell you that the condition of your authority is strong and financially sound. Indeed, it has improved year over year. This year, we can highlight a few milestones, including the completion of the consolidation of the Sweeney and Richardson Water Systems, the completion of our first customer satisfaction survey, the litigation of DuPont, Chemours, and Captiva in the Delaware Court of Chancery, where we hope to prevent those companies from shielding themselves from their ongoing liabilities, and the adoption of $112.9 million budget. Now, your water and wastewater utility continues to grow with over 2,073 meters installed and a record $24.86 million in conveyed assets over the calendar year. Both of these growth indicators were higher than anticipated, and despite a rate increase necessitated by inflationary pressures and the pollution of our upstream neighbor, Chemours, our water and wastewater services remain the most affordable in the region, with on average customer income spent with our utility less than that of Brunswick County, Fayetteville, Onze County, and Pender County. Our system development charges are also the lowest in the region, demonstrating our ongoing commitment to the economic vitality of our community. Now, good governance is a hallmark of a well-run utility, and our utility continues to receive national recognition for the operational and maintenance policies of our board. Our strategic plan is informed by the goals and objectives of our board, and it's based upon the effective utility management principles, our industry's primary guidance for best governance practices and continuous improvement. The National Association of Clean Water Agencies has recognized our utility with the Excellence in Management Program and honored us with gold recognition in calendar year 2023. This honor ranks us among the best top-performing utilities in the nation. This year, our utility was also selected to represent other utilities at an EPA-led process to update these same guiding principles. The year has been unprecedented in many ways, with numerous underserved and unserved communities reaching out to CFPUA, asking for service extensions to address failing septic systems or groundwater contamination issues. Stepping up to address these concerns, CFPUA and New Hanover County are now partnering on a multitude of projects to provide temporary relief and to extend water service to unserved parts of the community. At the same time, we continue a historic partnership to support the orderly growth of our county, where we're working on structured investments in northern New Hanover County to support jointly funded a major project to provide water and wastewater service where it's never been before. Taken together, this is evidence of our efforts to forward several board strategic outcomes, including an effort to strive to understand and meet all the needs of our stakeholders to ensure infrastructure stability and to maintain and strengthen our financial viability. Now, utility consolidations between local government services is one of the most difficult and labor-intensive efforts that local governments can undertake. Such consolidations are never taken lightly, but when they're done right, they can provide value to all involved for decades to come. The work of evaluating a potential consolidation between CFPUA and the Town of Wrightsville Beach Utilities was completed just last month. Our neighbors are now considering the CFPUA's board offer letter, and they have engaged a third-party engineer to provide advice. We anticipate that we'll have a response maybe as soon as April. Any draft terms for a possible consolidation will have to be vetted by the Wilmington City Engineer, the New Hanover County Engineer, and the Local Government Commission. More to come on that in the near future. Now, CFPUA remains deeply involved in local, state, and national per- and polyfluorally alkaline substance litigation and subject matter development. We continue to host academic and other research partnerships at our facilities. We remain a national leader in PFOS education and treatment solutions, and in many ways, your staff is literally writing the book for over 5,000 other utilities that will have to address PFOS contamination in their source water. In 2023, we hosted over 26 visits from individuals and agencies from across the nation. 425 visited our facilities to see how our community stepped forward and addressed the PFOS problem, years before others were aware it was occurring in their own. Now, we are the beneficiaries of an incredible legacy. Like the elder who plants a tree knowing that they would never sit under its foliage, our parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents bequeathed to us a wealth of infrastructure. And like our ancestors, it's now time for us to prepare the infrastructure for future generations. CFPUA has a 10-year CIP that includes over half a billion dollars' worth of planned capital improvements. Eighty-six percent of that is dedicated to repair, rehabilitation, and replacement of infrastructure that has reached or exceeded its useful life. Our CIP in this FY alone is $77.4 million, and it represents a significant investment in our community. Key to our vision of serving future generations is the replacement of the South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant. Originally opened 51 years ago, this community asset has now reached the end of its useful life and stands ready for total replacement. Our board has begun the work necessary to cover this next 50 years by engaging a contractor engineer through a $13.1 million contract to cover Phase 1 progressive design-build activities. Construction may begin as soon as one year from now, but no later than mid-2025. Now, we remind ourselves every day that infrastructure management is a key function of any utility. And as good stewards of our infrastructure, we have projects that span the full spectrum of potential activities for the water sector, from major investments in city or county-specific projects to difficult and costly capital projects to replace existing infrastructure. We have invested millions of dollars every year in our community. Our board has recently received an economic impact study detailing the positive impacts of CFPUA investments. The information in that study was very enlightening, and members of our board suggested that we share those results with the county commissioners in whatever format and forum is deemed appropriate. So we'll be working with your staff over the next months to determine how we might accomplish just that. Financial viability, as a special unit of local government, we hold a public trust to hold ourselves to the highest fiduciary standards. And as verified in our latest audit, annual comprehensive financial report and audit, your authority is healthy and well-managed, with revenues to cover expenditures as well as fund this robust and growing capital improvement program. We have taken prudent steps to ensure our financial needs are met through measured, well-thought-out financial policies and community involvement. So on behalf of CFPUA, its board, its staff, I want to thank you for your continued support of your authority and take any questions you might have.
Ken, just want to thank you so much for that report and for your leadership in this community. We have embarked with, as you mentioned in your report, numerous partnerships between the county and CFPUA to strengthen our county and frankly, our region as well. It is not an easy lift, but you've done it wonderfully, and I just want to thank you again for all the hard work of you and your staff and the engineering staff and everybody involved with CFPUA. We could not do it alone.
Thank you, sir.
Chair, just want to highlight one thing that Ken said, that we are definitely light-years ahead of many counties and water systems across the country as relates to PFOS and what we've done to remediate it, having a GAC system that is filtering out 99.9% of the PFOS in our community. I want to thank you, Ken, for your leadership there and your team. I think our board is lockstep with you, making sure we protect the citizens in our community from PFOS contamination, not just today, but for years to come, but also for other things that may emerge on the scene down the road. So again, thanks for all that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next is consideration of New Hanover County to act as fiscal agent and administrative grant from New Hanover County's Endowment, Community Endowment, to the New Hanover County District Attorney's Office. I'd like to recognize Mr. Ben David DA and Eric Cradle.
Mr. Chairman, honorable members of this county commission, good morning. In the nearly 20 years that I've served as your district attorney, I've appeared before this board on many occasions, and I can say to all watching that there has not been a time where I've come before you to ask for a resource, whether it's for the district attorney's office or for the incredible men and women of law enforcement who I advise, where you have not unanimously supported that request. And I want to thank you on a personal level for these last 20 years, and I know not all of you have been here in those seats that long, but the working relationship between the district attorney's office, that's actually a state agency, and the New Hanover County Commission, has been one that I so value and I thank you for. So I'm not here to ask you for money today. That's the first piece of good news. But what I am asking you to do is to sign an agreement that will make New Hanover County the fiscal sponsor for the DA operating budget and the Community Justice Center's operating budget. And to explain that very briefly, you hopefully heard the good news that the District Attorney's Office and the Harrelson Center teamed up to submit a $5 million grant to the Community Endowment that was awarded in late December. That resulted in the creation of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was born on January 30th of this year. It has an incredible board of directors, 12 individuals from this community, who I'll be glad to share any of their names with you, but they are some of the leaders who I've worked with for years. This 12,500-square-foot facility immediately across the street from the courthouse and the Harrelson Center will be a one-stop shop for women and children's cases in family justice settings, as well as inter-violence with children. We expect to have 25 employees working there full-time, eight from the district attorney's office, eight from the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office, four from the Wilmington Police Department, and then the other five from various nonprofits in this community who work directly on those types of cases, with critical physical evidence collection as well as witness interviews. It will be transformational for this community. It will be a 24/7 one-stop shop, and we are very excited to see it born and to get up and running. We expect it to open sometime in this summer, and we'll be here 100 years from now. And I really mean that I believe that that's where we are with this project. So what we are asking for you to do today is to be the pass-through entity for this money. So there's two agreements that I'm respectfully asking for you to sign. First, for your chairman to sign on behalf of the county commission, the agreement to accept this $3,439,066 from the Community Endowment to New Hanover County to act as the fiscal sponsor. The second agreement is between me and the Community Justice Center Board of Directors and the county to be the pass-through for the money that goes in the first respect to the district attorney's office, roughly $2.3 million. to the district attorney's office, roughly $2.3 million for the eight grant employees over the next three years that have been created for this Community Justice Center, and then $1.2 million to be awarded to the Community Justice Center for some of the operational costs associated with this center that will be done at the local level. So again, we're not asking for any county funds, those funds have already been awarded from the community endowment. We're asking for the county to accept those funds of $3.49 million, excuse me, $3,439,066. And then to have that money go to two pots, one to the district attorney's office that will go to the administrative office of the courts. You've long-funded, grant-funded assistant district attorneys and victim-witness legal assistants. This is just doing that, again, it's the same contracts that you've worked with. I want to particularly commend Eric Cradle and Gwen Hill for all their work in the finance department, not just in this agreement, but in the ones that you've funded for years with things like opioids and firearm violence and youth crime. These are just the same exact agreements with the administrative office of the courts, we're just having eight new positions. And then this $1.2 million that's going to go back to this board of directors to be at the local level, I'll be glad to share with you a little bit more about the operation costs if you have them, but it's all spelled out in the contract that your county attorney, Jordan Smith, has approved, as well as corporate counsel for the Community Justice Center, Andrew Heath, has also approved. We have cleared all of this with interim director Lakisha McDay at the community endowment, and I'll be prepared to answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. David, would you kindly give us and the community a broad-stroke overview of what this program is?
Absolutely. So there's really two ways to prove any case beyond a reasonable doubt, the collection of physical evidence and the testimony of witnesses. What we find in particularly domestic violence cases, and we had five first-degree murders related to domestic violence last year, and then five more in youth violence, we frequently have the dynamic of reluctant victims and witnesses. Batter Women Syndrome, Stop Snitching, it's all the same thing. It's basically saying, "I fear reprisal, I'm going to have to live with this person or live in this neighborhood after the case is over." And so what we have long done is embraced a police prosecutor approach. In fact, if you were to come next door to the courthouse now, something I started 20 years ago was co-locating the sheriff's office detectives with my prosecutors and victim-witness assistants to help on those sensitive cases for follow-up and follow-through. What this will do is add a much bigger component. We are now going to have sexual assault nurse examination take place at this center. Right now, women have to go to the hospital and wait hours at the emergency department. Right now, a woman on average tells her story eight to nine times to get into a shelter, to talk to first arrivals, to get that protective order, to talk to detectives and prosecutors, and then testify. This is going to be a one-stop shop where she only has to tell that story, or that child has to tell that story once, that's the testimony of a witness, that's going to be on videotape, that's going to be shared with all the professionals that are already there. So instead of that woman, that child going to eight to nine different agencies around the community, they're all going to come to the Harrelson Center and be co-located there. So that's what I mean by a one-stop shop. And that physical evidence collection will not only include sexual assault nurse examination, and I want to thank Novant and particularly Colleen Mistovich for the letter of support. There were 14 letters of support from law enforcement and nonprofits and the medical community as part of the application for this CJC. All of us coming together to do this will absolutely increase the rates of conviction and decrease the rates of dismissal in these toughest-approved cases, but they were also going to, I think, really deal with the healing and hope that is necessary to move on. And so the long-term counseling for post-traumatic stress, all the wonderful ecosystem that's already there at the Harrelson Center for things like job creation and to get clothing for those interviews and things like that are already there, and so we're very excited to make this a place for hope and healing and especially for justice. So what I said in the application is it really involves the three Cs, the Constitution, co-location, and collaboration. The Constitution says that victims have rights, and I've been the voice for victims now for a little while in this community, and I can tell you that helping them find their voice and seeing that case through is a critical, particularly when you're talking about an eight-year-old child. Why don't you come next door and see the abuser go to prison? That's going to happen in about 20 minutes from right now. These cases don't just happen, it happens because we get the necessary evidence, which is people having the strength to tell their story and know that there's a carrying team on the other side of that story, and to have that physical evidence collection. And so to have all of that in one place, in 12,500 square feet, co-located next to the courthouse, and the collaboration of civil law now being able to be practiced, because my team can't do that, we can't fill out protective orders, we can't get expungements, we can't fight evictions for the people that are in crisis. The legal aid community that's already there at the Harrelson Center is one of those letters of support, they can do all of those things. The physical evidence collection, which includes digital forensics, 94% of all cases are on these now, 94% of all cases. They used to be he-said, she-said, they're now they texted each other. To have these downloaded and to be able to really put those in a courtroom in real-time is going to be a game-changer. I can tell you, if I look excited right now, that's because after so many years of struggling for the resources to work so hard to make these cases just through frankly, the testimony of witnesses, to have all of these professionals in one place and to have the resources that we're about to throw on these cases, it's going to be a game-changer. And I just can't thank the endowment enough and the community for the support for the CJC. Like with anything, it's only going to work if the relationships of the people who are committed to this effort are strong and sustained, and I believe that these resources will help ensure that for years to come.
So if I might synthesize those comments down to two core points, this is what I think you've said to us. Number one, it's going to make things better and easier for people who have been victimized by crime in our community.
Correct.
Number two, it's going to make the ability for your office to convict criminal offenders that much better, that much easier as well.
That's right. This is about hope and healing for victims, and it's about accountability for defendants, and it's upholding the constitutional rights of victims, and it will co-locate right next to the courthouse, which is where we're always going to have these cases come, and it's going to involve the collaboration of law enforcement and prosecutors, which is very strong, and also all these wonderful nonprofits that are in this space that are needed for the long-term care of the people we serve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this is innovation at its best, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John.
Those are my comments, this is innovation at its best.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Providing next-level service for our citizens here and protecting those that can't protect themselves, thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, I want to thank you for bringing this and coming and speaking to us directly rather than just sending us a long letter. Your enthusiasm is palpable, and it goes a long way, certainly in my mind. Yeah, I've had the opportunity to take a tour over there, and it is truly fantastic, and to use an overworked term, transformative for our community. A couple of questions, though, that are maybe in the nuts and bolts. You're bringing on essentially eight new full-time employees in there. They will be housed over in the CJC, is that correct?
They will. That's correct. There will be eight of the 25 employees who will be co-located in that 12,500 square feet space.
And also a number of nonprofits that will be there, and you've noted 24/7, so we have 24 hours a day. Who pays for those nonprofits' employees there? Is that coming out of this money as well?
No, it's not. So just as the law enforcement has dedicated all those detectives, deputies, and officers as a real-time cost for them because they have to work somewhere and they're going to be housed there, the nonprofits, and we're talking about wonderful groups like the Carousel Center that had a great fundraiser last week, and I urge everyone listening to not forget about funding them. The same thing with Domestic Violence Shelter and Services, the Coastal Horizons Center, all of them have given letters of support. Rape Crisis is included within that. They're all going to have shared office space available to meet with their clients and to intake these cases as they occur.
I guess it was a backdoor way to get to. Some people may see this and see a tremendous amount of money going to this effort, thinking, "Oh, well, those nonprofits are taken care of, they've got all the money they need." Exact opposite.
That's just not the case. I hope you know me well enough to say that for years I've gone to every breakfast, lunch, and dinner to raise money for the nonprofits. Listen, there's a lot the government can't do and shouldn't do, and there is a trust that has been developed between a lot of these nonprofits and the clients they serve that we really want to make sure is sustained in long-term. And so while we are very glad to be able to prevent, provide rent-free space to their employees, these employees are going to all work under the direction of the district attorney, under the chief of police, under the sheriff's office, and under the hospital and the nonprofits that send their employees there. These eight employees that are initially funded through this grant will only last three years, and like with anything that I have come before you before, just as an example, the federal prosecution that now happens with permanent employees in this community, that started with a New Hanover County grant, me standing before you and saying, "If we do this right, the federal government will come and take care of this for years to come after we make the case for how good this is." So we have now three full-time federal prosecutors here in Wilmington that started out as special assistant U.S. Attorneys in my office, county-funded. This will be the same thing. These eight employees, it is my sincere hope and expectation, will be funded for the first three years under this grant, but if we do this right, the state of North Carolina should be picking up the tab on this for permanent funding thereafter. And that is why I've included all eight of these positions into an expansion budget that I'm hoping will be funded at the state. And even though I will not be the district attorney, I don't know if you've heard that rumor, after September, I plan on staying very involved with the Community Justice Center and to advocate for the resources necessary to make sure that this is up and running for years to come. That is my commitment to all of you and to the endowment and to everyone watching.
Ben, you answered my last question. It's about what happens in three years, and the thinking is that the state will step in at that time. We're also standing up a nonprofit. Will there be some efforts to fundraise through the nonprofit to help pick up that tab, because that'll be a lot of money in three years?
That's a great question. So if you actually look at the carrying costs, and the Harrelson Center is a wonderful space, we're getting it for $17 a square foot over there. If you're doing that math, that's about a quarter of a million a year for that space. Try and find that anywhere in this community. So we're going to have a carrying cost of roughly $500,000 after the music stops, so to speak. We're going to need to continue raising money through some different source. It could be through government sources like the state or local, or it could be through good old-fashioned fundraising that the other nonprofits are doing. I would like to do what I can from this seat in the time that I have left and moving forward as a private citizen to make sure that there is sustained funding for the CJC, because I believe that once we start this, it will be just like so many of the wonderful programs you've stood up through the years. It becomes indispensable to the administration of justice, and it's money very well spent.
So all those nonprofits, including this new one, stand up, they're standing up, need our support as a community now more than ever.
More than ever. You know, what we don't want to do is say, "Well, because we have this huge endowment, we can stop giving to nonprofits." It has never been more critical than right now to support the nonprofits, the ones that I've just mentioned that are going to be part of this CJC, and so many others that are on the front lines of working directly with the children and the women that we're directly serving at this Community Justice Center. I urge everyone listening to continue to support the nonprofit community.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, just a comment. Mr. David, thank you for coming and presenting yourself. We've learned over the years to trust your recommendations, and you know, I think anything that we can do to make it easier for victims to tell their story, and it's got to be so terribly painful for them to continue to be in front of people and tell that story over and over, so I just want to thank you for thinking of them and making it easier for them to get access to what they need.
Well, I still appreciate those comments, Vice Chair Pearson. Let me just say that there are two dynamics that I've seen through the years where someone has to tell their story over and over again. The first is they start to give up hope because they say, "How many times do I need to say this and people aren't listening?" We are listening, but they're serving different functions, one to get into a center, one to get a protective order, another one to get justice in a criminal court, maybe another one in a child support hearing. And so to have all those things being done at one place, one time is a crucial component for them not to feel like they're giving up or other people are giving up on them. But the second thing is, we deal with traumatized people, and traumatized people put that trauma in a different part of their brain. It's not in the frontal cortex where rational thought occurs, it's in the survival part of your brain, and truly, some of those things get triggered, and they have flashbacks, and they remember details, sometimes even years later. When a person has to tell their story to multiple sources, that story changes, and people think they're lying when they're in a courtroom and they have five versions of the same event, they're not lying, that means they were traumatized. And so again, it is so crucial to do this right the first time, to have trained professionals on video, it clearly shows they're not being coached. All of those things being done in so many of these cases that currently we don't have the resources for is a wonderful thing for the administration of justice. I know it's going to help the people in this caseload and the professionals who serve them.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the grant, authorize the execution of the two agreements, and to adopt the associated budget amendment to receive and expend the grant funds.
Second that.
Mr. Scalise made the motion, Mr. Barfield second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much. And I invite all of you for a tour, by the way. I know Commissioner Zapple already has come, the professional staff, and the county commissioners, I urge you to come across the street to the Harrelson Center and see what we're building, and we'll be having an open house when it's fully up and running. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is the presentation of Pages Creek Watershed Restoration Plan. I'd like to recognize Drew Harrison.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for allowing us to have some time on your agenda. Before I get started, I'd like to recognize my board members that are here, so if anybody who is on my board will stand up. I know who you are, so. So our chair, Sue Hayes, is here, and then one of our associate members, Roger Shue, is here as well. I encourage you to talk to them about this later, they've been involved as well. So the Pages Creek Watershed Restoration Plan was developed through a partnership with Cape Fear Resource Conservation Development and Moffett Nichols. Those partners are here as well, so if there are any questions for those partners, they're able to answer. And it was created because Pages Creek is a priority watershed for the New Hanover Soil and Water Conservation District as a whole. And this plan is to help identify what problems are and hopefully to identify solutions. So just as a point of reference, the Pages Creek Watershed is in the northeast part of the county. It includes the communities of Porter's Neck, Bay Shore, and half, the northern half of Middlesbrough Loop Road. This watershed was identified in the Soil and Water Strategic 22-26 Plan as a priority, and we would be seeking information and funding to help improve water quality in this watershed. This watershed has been identified in watershed monitoring that the county has been persistent with over the last 20 years as being the most degraded in the county, most of it being fecal matter. If you look at the map that's on the right side of the slide, you see the outline of the watershed. Pages Creek is considered SA waters, which means they're shellfish harvesting waters, and they're on the State 303D list. This means the stream has the potential to be pristine but isn't. And the areas that are highlighted in red are permanently closed to shellfishing, the orange areas are conditionally closed, that means it depends on how much rain has happened and when the rain has happened, and then the green areas are open to shellfish harvesting. So you can see on that map, at least half of the creek is closed to using that natural resource in the county. A watershed restoration plan has to be composed of nine elements. We worked with several different stakeholders, along with the original partners, to identify these elements, and these elements are helped to estimate, describe problems, and hopefully find possible solutions and outcomes. We worked with the planning department, the engineering department, the parks department, Cape Fear Public Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, and then again Moffett Nichols and Cape Fear RC&amp;D to come up with this plan. So it aligns with the county's strategic plan along with the Soil and Water Strategic Plan. It specifically aligns with the county's strategic priority of sustainable land use and environmental stewardship to help reduce bacterial contaminants in county creeks. And that's what we're talking about when they test for fecal matter, it's bacteria that is directly related to that. So some green infrastructure solutions include living shorelines and bioretention. These things work because they help infiltrate that stormwater into the ground and treat those pollutants naturally before they run into the creek or local water bodies. So bioretention, think of it as a garden that's a sponge, and it holds that rainwater between the point at which it originates, between there and where it would go into the creek. A living shoreline not only helps absorb bacteria, but it also helps reduce erosion. And part of the issue with erosion is all those sediment particles that end up in the water, any other pollutant that's found clings to those sediment particles. And so when those sediment particles are moved around during a storm, during tide, you're stirring up those pollutants once again. So we're in the process of next steps. This plan was just approved by the Division of Water Quality in January of this year. We want to get continued input from stakeholders, which also include community members. We did have one community meeting before creating the nine-element plan and intend on having multiple meetings afterwards. Having community engagement is crucial in getting outside funding sources. They can also count as volunteer match hours if they're helping install some of these green infrastructure practices as well. We are also looking for funding to install this green infrastructure. So our next steps are hopefully a grant type similar to 319, which is through the EPA to install possibly bioretention at school, a church, bigger projects, maybe even use some of the FEMA buyout properties for infiltration as well. But that's an important part of working with parks because we don't want to overwork their staff where they're already stretched thin. And that's it. I try to make it short and sweet, simple enough so that if you've got questions, I've got time to answer them. So I welcome any questions at this time.
Quick comment. Drew, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, you know, that quick presentation. I know you backfilled here with a very lengthy report that I believe was developed by Moffett and Nichol. I just want to emphasize again how important this work is. I know sometimes it feels tedious and some people may say, so what? Well, a large part of New Hanover County, and certainly on our eastern side, is all water. And it is really important that we identify the best practices we can to help preserve and to hopefully restore some of these areas that through development, through natural, whatever, that they can be usable again. I mean, it's miserable that we have to close to shellfishing so much of, in this case, Pages Creek. Also, I want to commend you the work of the Soil and Water Conservation District. I know you work, talk about it, an agency that punches above their weight. You have very small amount of resources, yet every one of these best practices that you put into, the bioretention, shore erosion practices that you actually build, it has a double effect. One, it works in our environment, but also it demonstrates to all of our community, all the citizens who come by and look at it and go, oh, I could make that happen in my yard, a bioretention. It sounds like it's a fancy term, but it's actually pretty darn simple and is incredibly effective. So I thank you and everybody that works with you for continuing to do this and continuing to beat that drum. It makes such a huge difference, you know, here in our community. Thank you, Drew.
You're welcome. And I would like to thank citizens who have been patient and have waited and gave their input to this and they're wanting to continue to be engaged. We look forward to that engagement. We know without their eyes on the ground that we can't be effective.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept their report.
We just need to hear the presentation, there's no action required.
I thought you were talking about item four.
Yeah. No, sir. There was no action. Certainly, the board is free to, but staff is not proposing an action. An action equates to factoring in to policy decisions.
Yes, ma'am. It's consideration of New Hanover County Language Access Plan. Lauren McConville.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing us to present today. My name is Lauren McConville, and I am serving as Communications and Outreach Manager here for New Hanover County. And I have the pleasure of telling you guys a little bit about the project that we've been working on for the past year to create the county's first language access plan. So I'll back up and start where it all began, back in the fall of 2022. The Office of Diversity and Equity and also the Communications and Outreach Office combined to apply and were accepted to the Language Access Collaborative. This is an initiative from UNC Chapel Hill School Institute for the Study of Americas and specifically the Building Integrated Communities Program. And so this is the inaugural class comprised of nine total municipalities and government organizations that have come together with community partners to build inclusive access plans and policies related to language access. You can see on the map there the other municipalities that were involved with us this year. There's New Hanover County, the city of Wilmington, Town of Cary, Morrisville, High Point, Winston-Salem, the county of Buncombe County, and then several others that combined to get together each month to start building inclusive plans for their communities. The big piece of this really is to have a goal at the end of this is to have a formal language access plan. And so each monthly work session that we had over the past year focused on best practices, focused on what other language access plans look like in communities, and how we can build that specific to our community itself, not just to write this plan, put it on paper, put it in a binder and put it away, but to consistently update this information and to collaborate with our community to make sure it's reflective of the people that are a part of our vibrant community. So we submitted our plan this past January, and we're going to share a little bit of that with you here today. In July, the icing on the cake is that the county will receive twenty-five thousand dollars from this collaborative to help us implement this plan. So we hope we can get your consideration and adoption today. I'll start just by introducing our team. I keep saying "we," but I want you to know who we are. And so that's myself, who I've already talked about, but also members of our Diversity and Equity Team. So we have Linda Thompson, our Chief Diversity and Equity Officer, as well as Mari Mackenzie and Monica Rohina, who are coordinators for that office, that work specifically with our Hispanic and Latino community in here. We also have our Equity Coordinator, Fawn Rhodes, from Health and Human Services as a part of this embedded into our county team. And then our selection for our community partner was Cape Fear Latinos. We have a strong relationship with them already through the Office of Diversity and Equity, and it was a natural fit for us to continue that partnership, deepen that relationship to make sure that we are serving that community as well. So I'll turn it back to why language access and why is this important for our community. We know that the county's mission is to provide equitable opportunities and exceptional public service. We see this as a natural extension of that mission. And I'll mention here, too, we've got a picture of our customer service desk at the Government Center as an example of how we're already doing a lot of this work that you'll see in our plan and that you've seen. The tickers, the screens that you see above our customer service desk are all bilingual, so that's in English and in Spanish, welcoming people as they come into the Government Center and helping people with limited English proficiency, or LEP as you'll hear throughout the presentation, be able to find the resource that they need and to provide that service. We also have resources that are already in effect here with the county, the language line being one of those primary resources. And that customer service desk, as well as all county employees, are able to access telephonic interpretation in over two hundred languages. So that is something that's already in place that we just are looking to streamline and define with this plan. We also have access to ASL, or American Sign Language, video interpretation devices throughout the county at ten different facilities. So making the public aware of that is a part of this plan and also making sure that employees know how to access these resources with adequate training. We have bilingual and multilingual staff embedded in multiple agencies across the county, so we're doing a lot of this work already. What this language access plan will do is streamline and formalize those priorities and allow us to keep up with what's happening in our community and responding to the needs of those that we live, that live here. We also, in emergencies, hurricanes, COVID, throughout different public crisis, we're promoting information in English and in Spanish through our communications team and making sure that we're getting that depth of penetration of messaging into our community. So like I said, a lot of these things, we're doing the work already. The plan itself formalizes this and creates cohesion across county employees for accessing these resources and lets our residents know where and how they can access these resources as well. Another big piece of the language access plan is really just bringing us into federal and state compliance. The biggest piece of that is going to be Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which requires that government agencies that accept federal funding provide language access resources to their community. And that's meaningful access is the key phrase there. So making sure that our residents that have limited English proficiency have meaningful access to our programs and services. There's over fifty-one different languages that are spoken in New Hanover County, we found out throughout this process. And so having some sort of a guideline or a guiderail for where and when to incorporate different languages is also another important piece. And so one of the best practices that we look at comes from HUD. And so this is a federal guidance for the four-factor analysis. So that's kind of helping us define a little bit more specifically what languages we should be focusing on. And so those four factors really look at the number of individuals within your community with limited English proficiency. And so what are those languages within our community that we can look at and see how often they would impact these services or need these services from us? And then also, what's the nature and the importance of that service as well? Then also, are we the only ones providing that resource? And then what does that associated cost? So taking all of those things into account as we're looking at all of this language data that we've pulled to make sure that we are in compliance there. Another one is a safe harbor parameter, and that one's a little bit more simple. That one just breaks it down to one thousand residents or five percent of your population. So that's another easy way to look at these numbers and then take a big step back and say, okay, this is something that we need to include as a part of our language access resource. So the next thing for us to do really with those guidelines was to do the actual assessment, to figure out what languages are being spoken in our community and in what population. So we first turned to our county staff. We asked them in each department throughout the county, we conducted a survey and said, what languages are you being requested? What languages are often being resourced through your employees, through the language line data? We looked at 911 data, we looked at the actual usage of our language line to see what those top languages are. And you can see in that chart off to the side, those are some of the results. I don't think it'll surprise any of you that Spanish was at the top of the list, far and away. We did have often requests for ASL, so we knew that that was something that was important for our community to consider as well. And then the rest that you see are the occasionally. We did have more languages identified internally, but those were rarely or never resourced by our departments. So we didn't include that information here, but that information is available if you should need it. We also looked to our community partners with Cape Fear Latinos being our partner throughout this language access plan, to hear their feedback about what they're hearing for people that are accessing government services, how can we improve that information that we're putting together? We also looked at community data. So we looked at New Hanover County Schools, UNCW, CFCC, Novant Health, all of our community partners to compare what their most recently and most frequently accessed languages are as well, to make sure that we're in compliance and that we know what our other partners in the community are providing. We looked at census data. That's obviously another big thing for us to do. So the American Community Survey from 2021 identifies the numbers that you see there, Spanish far and away matching our internal data, being the top language spoken that is non-English. You also see a list of several languages in the second section there, where it's listed a total of two thousand and fifty-seven. If you'll think back to our safe harbor parameters or anything, those numbers are getting close to that one thousand mark, but none of those languages that were identified there met that completely. So based on the information that we have there, we've identified Spanish and ASL as our top languages that we will be addressing in this plan. We also talk about what is in the actual plan, and so we talk about language access coordination. And so that is being done right now through our Office of Diversity and Equity. We want to keep that there. We think that's the natural home for this coordination and really acting as a resource for our employees and for our community to reach out, to identify, improve, and to access these resources. I talked in the beginning about a number of different resources, thank you, that we have already in action throughout the county, and you can see those listed there. This really defines how people can access these, what kind of training is available for individuals to make sure that they know how to use these when they identify a customer who needs resources outside of English. It defines how we use multilingual and bilingual staff. We want to be sure that we're avoiding interpretation by minors or by children when there could be sensitive information that's being shared. It's also just a compliance factor, too, and a risk for us to cover. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mari Mackenzie, who is going to share some information from our partners at Cape Fear Latinos about their impact and benefits seen through this plan.
Buenos dias, Commissionales. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mari Mackenzie from the Office of Diversity and Equity. And with me today, Monica Rohina, also from the Office of Diversity and Equity. Today, we want to read a brief statement from Cape Fear Latinos about the importance of the language access plan. I am going to be presenting it in Spanish, and Monica will be interpreting. Al hablar sobre el plan de acceso lingüístico del condado de New Hanover y el impacto positivo en la comunidad, es importante destacar que la comunidad se sentirá escuchada con mayor comunicación y comprensión.
When talking about New Hanover County's language access...
Ma'am, if you could step to the microphone, please.
When talking about New Hanover County's language access plan and the positive impact on the community, it is important to note that the community will feel heard with better communication and understanding. Muchas personas sienten miedo de accesar los programas y servicios del condado porque no saben cómo hacerlo. Pero este gran plan, por este gran plan, las familias perderán el miedo y tendrán confianza de participar y acceder a los programas y servicios del condado. Many people are afraid to access county programs and services because they do not know how to due to language barriers. But with this great plan, families will lose their fear and have confidence to participate and access the New Hanover County's programs and services. El plan de acceso lingüístico es el primer paso hacia un futuro donde todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad se sientan empoderados y representados, promoviendo inclusividad y eliminando barreras lingüísticas. Thank you. The language access plan is the first step toward a future where all members of our community will feel empowered and represented, promoting inclusivity and removing language barriers. Thank you.
We'll give you back to Lauren. Thank you. And with that, that concludes our formal presentation. What we're asking today is for your consideration and adoption of this plan so that we can move this forward internally with staff, just to make sure that those training resources are available for our community. And if there's any questions, we have myself and Linda Thompson here to help assist.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lauren, thank you, and Mari and Monica, thank you very much for that presentation. That was good. I think the whole program is terrific. My question is really a basic question here. I noticed that you had a percentage of total population, I'm not sure I'm reading it right. When you say there's four percent, four percent of New Hanover Counties...
That's correct, yes. Four percent of New Hanover's population.
We're saying we have three thousand eight hundred and eighty-four Latino-speaking residents here, correct?
That's correct. And that's specific to limited English proficiency households. So that's individuals who speak little to very little to no English. And so when we talk about LEP, that defines that specifically. So it won't necessarily identify people who speak English and Spanish fluently on both sides, but those who don't speak English with proficiency.
So my question is, it's four percent of what?
The total population. The total population.
The total population is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So I think the basic math doesn't, does not, you know, four percent of that is not three thirty-eight eighty-four. So I'm just wondering, am I missing something or is there some other calculation that was used here? I have no doubt that we have a large Hispanic population in New Hanover County, but when I'm presented with this, I just, I couldn't make the math work in my own head.
Yeah, and this is census figures, so we can go back and pull that specific information, but it was identified at that percentage by the U.S. Census Bureau from the 2021 American Community Survey.
In doing reverse mathematics there-
Rob, I think what it is is, obviously, the Latino population is a lot higher than that.
That's exactly where I'm at.
Yeah.
Out of that Latino population, four percent don't speak English.
I believe right now the estimate in our county is somewhere between six and seven percent. Six point two percent are Spanish-speaking, and so four percent of that have little to very little English proficiency. So a large population of the smaller subset.
I see what you're saying. You're right, the math's not right.
Yeah, and we'll go back and look at that, sure.
We'll follow up offline, and that just caught my eye on that. Your overall point is well taken there, and I'm glad we're doing this. The other thing I'm so glad you highlighted was the ASL portion of it that gets no traction out there. But the reality is, a lot of our aging population here in New Hanover County is becoming more and more reliant on American Sign Language. So thank you for putting a spotlight on that. Going forward, I think we're going to see more and more people relying on that as they become hard of hearing as they get older.
Absolutely.
So, you know, thank you.
The data that we have for that is a little less clear than some of the other information, but at the most recent data that we got from the Division of Deaf and Hard of Hearing Services from the state had about twenty-seven thousand individuals within the county that identify as deaf and hard of hearing. Now, not all of them are using ASL, but even if only a quarter of that are using ASL, we identify that as a strong need.
Thank you for just saying that out loud in front of the cameras. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Lauren, for your presentation. My youngest daughter has traveled extensively and spent a good bit of time in Italy and stayed with the family there, and part of her role was actually helped teach their children English. And when she came back home, she continued to mentor them and teach them via Zoom English because they speak mainly Italian. And my wife just came back from the Dominican Republic recently and recognized that most of the folks that work there don't really speak English and don't care that we speak English, but they speak their fluent language, and Americans have a hard time in terms of speaking and getting what they need. So I think it's great that we're finding ways to assimilate individuals here, but also make it easier for people to do business within our county, number one, but in our community as a whole, number two. With that, Mr. Chair, I make the motion we approve and adopt the language access plan as presented.
I did have a question before we did that. Curious why we break out Chinese and Mandarin, and Cantonese is another of the many Chinese languages that are out there. Why do we have specifically Chinese and Mandarin as the breakout of those languages?
So those are identified by the speakers themselves. So some people identify as speaking Mandarin versus speaking a more universal Chinese language. So being able to accommodate for those, the different levels within Chinese, I'm trying to think of the word now, but the different dialects that are within there. So this was self-reported either through the census data and through our internal surveys as well.
Just my understanding that Mandarin is the most common Chinese dialect, and it seems somewhat repetitious to me to say Chinese and then Mandarin if we weren't also going to list Cantonese, which is a major dialectic variant as well.
And some of the census data on that muddies it a little bit because they list both of those as selections for individuals throughout their surveys. So there's work to define that. But within, when we get to those parameters that we mentioned before, we're happy to provide the specific dialect as well at the county level.
Just more of a curiosity. Thank you very much for answering.
Second, the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next is presentation of fiscal year 2023 through 2024 financial results through twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Mr. Eric Cradle.
Good morning. I'm here to provide an update on the county's financial position through December of 2023, which represents the halfway point of the fiscal year. As an overall summary, things are going according to plan with revenue tracking a little higher than budget and expenditures being right on budget. Property taxes represent over half the county's general fund revenue. This year, their property tax rate was set at forty-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. As you can see here, the tax rate has declined each of the past two years. Additionally, the fiscal year twenty-two rate of forty-seven point five cents, which was the first year following the most recent revaluation, was also a decline from the prior year. So including that year, the tax rate has been cut three consecutive years. As noted here, the property tax bills were mailed in late July, and consistent with prior years, our citizens could pay interest-free until early January. Based on that timing, the majority of the property tax bills are historically paid in the December and January timeframe. Because of that timing, while the rest of the slides include property taxes through December, I've included this slide to provide an update through the end of January. As shown on this slide in the second bar from the right, receipts for the seven-month period ended January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four were two hundred and five point one million, ahead of the budget projection of two hundred and three point four million and exceeds the prior two years shown on the left part of the chart. The increases compared to prior years occurred despite the tax cuts I just discussed, which is due to organic growth in the tax base as well as a higher collection rate percentage. The far right bar of the chart depicts the full year budget of two hundred and sixteen point two million. Thus, based on the two hundred and five point one million in collections to date, the county needs to receive eleven point one million dollars over the remainder of the fiscal year to reach the budget. While not shown on this slide, I'll note that in each of the past two fiscal years, the county has received between twelve and thirteen million dollars in property taxes over the final five months of the year. Thus, staff is optimistic that we will come in at or slightly above budget. The second largest revenue source of the county is sales taxes, which is approximately twenty-five percent of the county budget. Sales taxes are received on a three-month lag, which means that the December financial results reflect only three months' worth of receipts. Since December, we've received sales taxes for two additional months. So similar to the property taxes, this slide provides the latest information available, which includes the two additional months, and thus this slide shows the results for the first five months of the fiscal year. The far right bar shows actual receipts of forty-eight point eight million compared to a budget of forty-five point five million and prior year receipts of forty-eight point six million. So right on track thus far. While seven months of collections remain with a fairly thin variance to budget, the natural volatility in this line item and recent trends being a bit soft, attaining budget for this line item might be a bit more of a challenge. The remaining slides present information related to the county's most significant funds through December thirty-first. This slide shows the total revenue and expenditures through the first half of the fiscal year. As it relates to revenue, and as we will see in more detail on the next slide, receipts have totaled two hundred and twenty-five point five million compared to a budget of two hundred and nineteen point nine million and the prior year actual of two hundred and eleven point six million. As it relates to expenditures, which is the right set of bars on this chart, we have spent one hundred and seventy-nine point eight million, which is just under the expected budget of one hundred and eighty-one point three million. When we received, when we reviewed the first quarter results back in November, our expenditures were a little higher than budget, so it's good to see them trending back a little lower now. This slide provides more detail on general fund revenue. Property tax revenue realized for December thirty-first amounted to one hundred and sixty-seven point four million compared to a budget of one sixty-six point three and the prior year actual of one fifty-nine point four. And consistent with the discussion a moment ago, sales taxes are right on budget and essentially flat with the prior year. The other revenue category shown on the right side of the chart shows actual receipts of thirty-four point six million compared to a budget of thirty point one million and the prior year of twenty-eight point eight million. The primary factors impacting this favorable variance relate to a two-point-two million-dollar ABC board excess profit distribution that we received back in November, as well as higher investment income realized as a result of higher interest rates. This slide depicts expenditures by major government function. The dark blue bar represents actual expenditures for each function, and the teal-colored bar is budgeted expenditures. You can see that for education, which is the far-left set of bars, general government, which is the middle set of bars, and human services, which is just to the right of general government, the actual expenditures are less than budget. However, for public safety and the other category, the opposite is true with expenditures exceeding budget. For the other category, the variance is due to the timing of capital outlay and is expected to equalize by year-end. However, the variance in public safety is likely to continue and relates primarily to personnel expense. Public safety and especially the detention center has faced significant and ongoing staff shortages that has required more overtime hours to be worked and had a higher overtime rate of pay to ensure proper staffing. While I had been hope that the shortages would be temporary, the shortages have persisted. This slide relates to the debt service fund. Based on lower scheduled principal and interest payments, the allocation of property taxes to this fund was reduced in each of the past two fiscal years, which impacts the year-to-year comparisons. Expenditures are made according to the repayment terms of the underlying debt. The results for this fund are as expected. The environmental management fund, which includes the county's landfill, collects no tax receipts and instead a self-sufficient fund that charges fees for the services it provides. The tipping fee remained unchanged in fiscal year twenty-four after being increased by four dollars last year. The increase in total revenue in fiscal year twenty-four, as you can see in the left set of bars on this slide, is primarily due to higher tonnage at the landfill with two hundred and three thousand dollars processed thus far this year compared to one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in the prior year. Expenditures of five point seven million compared to budgeted expenditures of seven point nine million, which is a variance of two point two million. Within the expenditures caption, the personnel expense and operating expense items are very close to budget. It is the capital outlay line item that is significantly below budget, and the reason for that is just due to the timing of those expenditures. Those budgeted expenditures are expected to be incurred in the second half of the year, and so we should see that gap narrow over the next two quarters. As it relates to fire services, virtually all of its revenue is derived from property and sales tax allocations. As you can see from the bars on this slide, both revenue and expenses are tracking very closely with budget as well as the prior year. This is the third year of the county providing stormwater services to the unincorporated county and the second year of full service fees being charged. Stormwater fees are included on the property tax bill and thus follow the same pattern of receipts. Revenue is tracking just below budget. On the expenditure side, you can see from the set of bars on the right, expenditures are significantly below budget. The reason for this is because minimal funds have been spent thus far on the eight hundred and forty thousand dollar White Road Culver, Culvert Repair Project that the board authorized in November, as well as two watershed studies related to acorn branch and pumpkin creek totaling four hundred thousand. The expenditures of those projects should pick up in the second half of the year. That concludes my prepared remarks.
Eric, thank you for that very positive report. I thank you. In your initial summary on the first page of our packet here, it shows a favorable variance of five point five million dollars with everything in, or, you know, two point five percent. Do you think, looking into your crystal ball, will that hold until June thirtieth?
I think we will end up over budget on the revenue side, not as much as in the prior two years. If you remember, the prior two years, our sales taxes came in significantly over the budgeted amount. This year, as I mentioned in the presentation, it's going to be a much closer margin. So I think we'll be above budget on revenue side, but perhaps not as much as we have been in the prior couple of years. The prior couple of years, we've been able to put money back into fund balance due to the sales tax variance. This year, we'll be using some of the appropriate fund balance that we budgeted.
And the, your last slide there, the stormwater services, you ran through that quickly there. If I heard you right, we have two major, or, you know, two studies and a major money, but I did the math in my head, only accounted for about one point two million dollars of that shortfall of two million dollars. Is there, did I have that wrong, or does that, will those projects result in bringing us up to budget on the expenditures?
Right, so there's a one, it looks like a one point three million dollar gap to me there, and the White Road's eight hundred and forty thousand, and then the other two projects are four hundred thousand dollars combined, so I think we'll end up coming up pretty close.
Pretty close, okay. Just concerned, I know we have a lot of projects out there that are needed, and we got to pass this past year with any major wind events. I won't use the H-word, but this is the time to prepare for following seasons. Just like to see us get everything out and done as much as possible that we have budgeted. Thank you for going back and looking at that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
The last thing tonight is committee appointment to juvenile crime prevention council?
Mr. Chair, appoint Wendy Dale and Clyde Lynn.
Second.
Commissioners, there's only one vacancy at this time?
I thought I saw three.
There are three, but the, to appoint at this time, the vacancy to appoint at this time is one at large.
I misheard Commissioner Barfield. I thought he said Wendy Dale, which I would second.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we have public comments. First person signed up is Linda Higgins.
Good morning.
Ma'am, you have three minutes. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Linda Higgins. I live at five-ten Manly Avenue here in Wilmington. I am here today to speak to you on behalf of our need for funding of our public schools. I have a thirteen-year-old who is part of the school system here, and we are sitting at this point with the school system talking about a twenty million dollar budget shortfall. Already, today, we have a school system that is outsourcing to, to public, to, to online teaching because they can't fill classrooms and they have had, they have frozen hiring. Think about that. Our kids are being taught on computer. Didn't we just go through a pandemic where we decided that wasn't a good plan? And now we're using that plan to save money. I'm here because we have a county to be proud of, but if we have failing schools, we will not have. If our schools implode because we don't fund them, and I understand that the state funding isn't coming, and yes, lo and behold, local funding's going to have to fill in. We have the thirteenth in taxable real estate wealth per student in this county. We are the eighth in total local revenue per student, and we are the eighty-third in funding. We have to fund our schools. We have to work with the school system and get our schools so that we don't have failing elementary schools, failing schools. I'm here to beg you to act as commissioners and take care of our county.
Next is Jessica Myers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jessica Myers. I'm a resident of New Hanover County. My little rascal is fourteen, so he's a freshman at Hogard, and we had the pleasure of him going through Holly Tree and Roland Grace. going through Holly Tree and Roland Grace. And fortunately, because the stock market has closed today, thanks to President's Day, I have the day off. So lucky you. I am also here to implore you to fund the school budget. I think we all know that teachers have such a critical, I don't need to preach to you about the importance of teachers, you all know it. But when we have the risk of losing a lot of employees, but also, I think it was 179 of them are student-facing, whether they are custodians or whether they are school counselors or teachers or people in the cafeteria, it means that those are eyes and ears on the kids and especially these kids that have been growing through the COVID pandemic, they're all having PTSD. It's, it's really alarming. Their learning has been slowed. It makes a lot of things really difficult. Again, I don't have to preach to you about that, but when we have more boots on the ground, we have more attention to those intangibles that can't be seen through a screen, like Ms. Linda was saying. If I'm zooming with a student, I'm not going to be hearing those side dialogues that can occur between kids candidly. There's more adults in the hallways, all of these things. And so I just, I certainly implore you, I'm fortunate enough to have this day off, but my family doesn't, the students are in school today like they should be, but I come here to kind of represent a lot of the parents that are out working, doing their hard work to feed their families and that kind of thing. So I appreciate your time and consideration, and I hope you throw some of that awesome over budget. I was like, what a perfect thing to come up after, somebody saying that you guys have done a really good job of managing your budget. So thank you. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Tim Merrick.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. My name is Tim Merrick. I live in Carolina Beach. First, I want to thank you for your historic and continued support for our schools and especially the vision that you're holding for improving the grossly insufficient infrastructure in our schools. Thank you very much for that. And while it might seem unfair that to you or to some of our taxpayers that, that there's a, that all of this funding is falling on you, it is. And unfortunately, you know, due to the state legislature's refusal to adequately, adequately fund public education, the responsibility is now yours. You know, it's the promise in our constitution that every child has the right to a quality education. As the schools are facing a $20 million shortfall this year, I'm asking three things from you. First, parents and students need you to advocate for additional funding and more appropriate allotments from our state legislature in general and from Senator Michael Lee specifically, who as chair of the Education Committee bears specific responsibility for North Carolina schools being the lowest funded in our entire nation. Next, I ask you to advocate with the Hospital Endowment Board to create a more sustaining stream of funds for our schools, for our children, and for our children's future. Last, I implore you, I implore you to step up to fund our schools at an even higher rate than in previous years. We are one of the wealthiest counties in the state, and we do have the resources. We must prioritize our children. Thank you again for your continued commitment and for being the last line of defense for our beleaguered public schools. Thank you.
I want to thank those who came here to speak on behalf of the school system. I will share with you, as I share with others, that the conversation about a budget right now for me is a bit premature. The Board of Commissioners, we have not had our first budget work session yet to even understand where we are. And just like I run my household, first I need to know what I'm working with before I start allocating anything anywhere. And you know, this Board of Commissioners in the past has always supported our public education system. For the last many years, we have increased and increased and increased our allocation per student. We've also added additional pre-K classrooms. Couple of years ago, we provided bonuses to all those folks that work in our public education system around Christmas time. I think it was $1,500, I believe, which came at the right time to help those individuals. Then following that, we also increased our local teacher supplement to the highest in the state. As you all know, the teachers' salaries are set by the state, and the local governments have the ability to provide a local supplement to attract and retain the best quality teachers in their community, and we sought to make sure that our teachers were the highest paid in the state. Our county right now funds roughly 620-plus positions beyond what the state mandates. As DPI says, the school system with a certain number of students should have this allotment of individuals working within the system. We have been very generous over the many years I've been on this board, 15 years, to provide additional roles and jobs within our public school system beyond what's mandated by the state. And I think we've done that to make sure that our school system is one of the best in the state. When you look at the region here, I think we stand head and shoulders above many within the region. From a Board of Commissioners standpoint, we can allocate resources to the school board, but we have no jurisdiction over how they spend those dollars. The school board is an elected body that sets policy for their school district. They decide who gets instructional materials, whether it be online or in person. Those are decisions that the local school board makes, not the Board of County Commissioners. Again, we allocate resources, but we have no ability or authority or mandate to direct how they spend those dollars. We can give additional resources and they can decide we're going to spend it on buying buses as opposed to paying salaries or extending this, that, and the other thing. So I want you to understand clearly, as I've received a number of emails from individuals, that your emails are probably misplaced or misdirected at best. The conversation really needs to be had with the school system itself because they, number one, not presented what their request is to our board, and that's going to come down the road. Once they continue to refine exactly what they need, then they'll make their formal request to our board. It's disappointing that individuals have gotten a little worked up, a little ahead of schedule because there really is a process that this thing flows through, and the first process is for them to have that budget work session. We'd have ours. KFIC Community College also requests money for education, and they have that budget work session and present those requests to the Board of Commissioners. And then through our staff working together, we figure out exactly what those allocations will be. But we're nowhere near that process yet. This is the end of February. Budget won't get passed until June. So I would encourage you all to watch the process, number one, to work with your elected officials, number two, stay in tune, number three, pay attention, number four, go back and do homework and research, number five, to understand what's been done in the past so you understand that the Board of Commissioners has really been a strong advocate for public education. I'm a product of the school system here, as my dad was. I went to Blunt Elementary, Snipes, Williston, and graduated from Nellie High School back in 1984. My dad graduated from Williston Senior High School back in 1964. This is my home. My daughters have gone to school here. I want to make sure that our school system is the best that it can be, but with everything, there is a process, and I think I've spoken to others about the process. And when you get outside the process or you jump ahead of the process, you really mess up the whole process itself. So again, I would encourage you all to follow this process and just know that we're looking out for our students here. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add one addition to Commissioner Barfield's comments, which I agree with completely. I believe the number of local hires, that's the number that the county commission has funded in here, is actually 788. So just to give you an idea that how much we have in the past and continue to fund here locally. Mr. Manager, am I correct on that?
Yeah, yes, sir. 788.
788. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to keep my mouth shut and not say anything.
Well, I'll just make a comment. Thank you, guys, for coming to speak, and if you're out there, we have received your emails. We are reading them, and I agree with what both of my commissioners here have said. We, quite honestly, we're as taken aback as you are at a $20 million shortfall, and we're, you know, looking at each other, how are we going to pay for that? You just saw our budget. So we're going to have a lot of discussions. We'll start with them this afternoon, and we will do all we can do to take care of our children, absolutely. My children went to school here as well, and I think it's huge that we educate our children. So we have heard you, and we want it as bad as you do. We got, we have to figure out how to make that happen.
Clark Kevin Hing.
Mr. Chairman, just to the vice chair's point, the board does have a budget work session at 1:30 this afternoon.
Mr. Chair. Just have a quick comment and request for our county manager. Could we reach out to the New Hanover County Endowment and ask a representative to please come and address this board? There was a major change by losing their director in, you know, like three weeks ago, I guess, at this point. There has been no public comment from the Board of Directors, but I found disturbing, but also we've heard, I've heard a lot from the public, say, want to know who, who's in charge of 1.3 billion dollars of the taxpayers' money over there? And there has been, again, no comment from the Board of Directors, and we just had a report or a presentation. Are we to now say that all of what was put in that presentation by the former director, are they out of, is, does any of that hold? Have they changed their philosophy? What, what is going on? I think that I would like to hear, and I know the public is anxious to hear, what exactly is going on over with the endowment? So could we make that request to have a representative come and address us?
If, in fact, that's the will of the board, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I believe it was in the paper the other day that the, his second-in-command of the foundation is the interim director. Is that not right?
Not interim, just running the day-to-day operations. They didn't give her the title of interim, just saying, running the day-to-day operations. So we don't know who's in charge, really, when you look at that.
And we got 1.3 billion dollars of our money sitting over there.
That's a good point, Commissioner Barfield, and I have read quite a few things about it not being transparent, and of course, we don't control that board either, but we should know what's going on over there. So I agree with Commissioners Apple that we probably need to be briefed on that. What is their process moving forward?
Meet and deliver.